We were having some problems with the sound before. We've got those fixed. Okay. Good afternoon. We welcome everyone here to the study meeting, the West Valley City Council. We'll begin as we usually do with the electronic statement about our meeting. Pursuant to Utah Code, West Valley City has determined that this meeting will be held electronically, without an anchor location, given the ongoing novel coronavirus COVID-19 pandemic. West Valley City has determined the pandemic presents a substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present at an anchor location. This meeting will be held electronically. Members of the press and public are invited to view this meeting live on YouTube Thank you. We note that we have a quorum. Councilman Yun will join us shortly. And let's see, we have one, two, three, then six members here. Just wanted to make sure I could see them electronically. So with that, then, we have the minutes of April 13th on our agenda to deal with.
I'll move for approval of those minutes.
Second, properly before us, then, hearing no further comments. Then, without objection, the minutes will be approved. And hearing no objection, that will be unanimous of those here. Then reviewing our agenda for later tonight, any concerns there? Any questions? They did add to that, I guess, an actual document that shows the $2 fee, as well as the $3 fee for the streetlight purchase. So that'll make it a little easier for the motion. Hearing nothing there, then, we'll go to our first public hearing scheduled for next week on application GPZ-2 2021. And in conjunction with that, we'll consider ordinance 21-19, ordinance 21-20, and resolution 21-58. And with that, then, Mr. Lima, or no, Mr. Pastrick is going to present this to us.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Council. This first item is a general plan change. You can see the property here at 3724 South, 3200 West. There are a total of four properties involved in this application. The north two properties have homes on them, or just one home on each lot. The one to the north would remain, and the proposal here would be to demolish the home that's on the the second lot there on the north, or the one that's to the south. All four properties together total 4.3 acres. The zoning right now is agricultural, and the requested zoning is the RS zone, which is the residential sustainability zone. This is the first formal request we've had for the RS zone. So if approved, this would be the first RS zone in the city. The request, a general plan change, is going from large lot residential, which is two to three units to the acre, to low density residential, which is three to four units to the acre. This next image here just shows the, a close-up of the four properties. You can see just some of the surrounding uses. There are some duplexes here on the north, and then also here more on the south end. And then, across the street, you have just the single-family homes, as well as to the south and west of this property. The next several slides are just pictures taken of the property and its surroundings. So this first one shows the home that would be demolished. So this one goes out, or has access to 3200 West. This next image is looking to the northwest, and is looking at the home that would remain. This is the, there's actually a fourplex that's just south of the property, so this is not a part. This next image is looking from the property to the north, looking across this property, so to the southwest. Next image is looking straight south across the property in question. This next one's looking to the southeast. This is looking east, so the buildings there on the left would be the duplexes that are north of this property. And then finally, this image here is the concept plan. So there's a total of 15 lots that are proposed. This would be a public street that's dedicated, you can see terminating in a cul-de-sac. As a reminder, the RS zone has a minimum lot size of 8,000 square feet, so all these lots would be at least 8,000 square feet or larger. And as a reminder, the RS zone also has a number of standards for the homes that promote energy efficiency, as well as water conservation. And so the developer in this case is proposing to follow those standards as written in the code. So they're not asking for any exceptions to those standards, and basically have incorporated in the development agreement the standards that are in the code. So again, those include things like local scape landscaping, low-flow fixtures in the house, solar energy for the homes, and then several other energy efficiency standards within the homes. And that summarizes our presentation on this item.
Council?
Steve, on this development, are they compliant with all of our requirements? Are they asking for any exceptions or changes?
So they are complying with the RS zone standards, so there's no, no exceptions being requested as part of this application.
Steve?
Yes, sir.
So I want to confirm with you, so they check every box we have for this plan?
That's correct. So, so basically what they've done here is they, they took the language that's in our code and just essentially proposed to use that in the development agreement. And so it, so they're, it's using the same language. We also included, just for clarity, that in addition to the RS zone standards, they would still have to meet the architectural requirements for, for the new homes here. So that's, those would be, those are spelled out in the code, but we just, again, added those for clarity, so they understand those still apply even in the RS zone.
The second question I have is, this one is the first one we have here regarding the new regulation we have with the energies, zero energy solution?
Correct.
I think it's exciting that somebody wants to develop in our RS zone. You know, it seems like every time we come up with some betterment, some creative idea, people say, oh, no one will ever want to do that. So I'm excited to see that happen.
Well, this is one I think that staff will be watching closely to see the effectiveness of that, and once it's built, to see if there are any recommendations on ways that even that could be improved for this new type of development.
Steve, I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
Development agreement seems to be very brief. It's just mainly referring to our RS zone?
Correct.
Or is it just the issue paper, and there's a detailed development agreement? Oh, there it is. Found it. Never mind.
Okay.
Sorry, too many documents on this one. So what is the minimum house size in this zone?
So the RS zone has a minimum size of 1,400 square feet. And that's, that's, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Nope, keep going.
I was just saying, that's, that's what they're, they're matching that, basically saying they will meet that standard.
And will these homes have basements?
So the, the RS zone does not require basements, and so they have not, they've not specified if, if they would include basements.
So do we need that? Do we need, I would like to know that before we approve a development agreement. Can we find that out by next week?
And so item, just to clarify, it does say, in item 10, this is in the development agreement, it says, so the mem square footage of finished above-ground habitable floor space for homes should be 1,400 square feet. A home shall include at least a three-quarter basement unless soil conditions preclude basements as determined by a soils report. So that's the, we don't, at this point, have a soils report. So assuming the soils report comes back to where they can do basements, then they will have at least three-quarter basements.
When will they have that soils report? I think we're kind of getting ahead of the cart without knowing if they'll have basements or not.
So that's a requirement as part of the subdivision process. So at this stage, we don't, don't have a soils report.
Steve, if, if the soils report says no basements, then they wouldn't have basements anyway, right?
Right.
Correct, but they could, we could require them to have a second story, so that these aren't so small of a house that people are only in them a very, very short time. So that's my concern, as being a 1,400 square foot home, if they're not going to have basements, I'm not as comfortable with it as if, maybe they had a second story, if they cannot do basements. A lot of our slant on grades have not kept.
But here.
They haven't been good developments. Let's just put it that way.
But here, Karen, the lot is R1A, but this one is more than R1A, so you're gonna think about that one, too.
Right. One, one point I could look, that I could look at between now and next week is, in the immediate area, if, if other homes in the immediate area have basements, then it's, it's very likely that this property would not have soil, soil problems that would preclude basements. So that's something we could look at between now and next week.
That would be very helpful. Thank you so much.
Matt?
But we're looking now at our, our requirements of the sustainability zone, what we want them to be. And that's not the question for this applicant. The question for this applicant is, did they comply with what we told them a year ago they had to do, or two years ago? And we could always take a look at our requirements for the zone and see if we want to change them, but it shouldn't be, we shouldn't have put this out there saying, if you comply with this zone, you can have it, and you can build on smaller lots, and you can build smaller homes. You have to meet these special requirements that we have for this zone, and then pull it away from an applicant that has planned to comply with everything. I think we're not looking at the right question here. The question is, if they've met the requirements, they can get what we told them they could have, not that we wish we had said something different when we passed the zone in the first place, or maybe we'll change the zone requirements in the future.
I think that's a good point, Steve.
In fact, you know, it was pointed out in the issue paper that we deliberately kept it to a small development, so that we could see how this worked, and if there would be any things that we would have to do differently. I think this is an ideal demonstration project, almost, if you will. It's small enough to, to manage, and yet there's enough here that we can get a good idea of, you know, the efficiencies and the energy savings that come through this type of project. And then we can take, obviously, another look at that to see if anything needs to be upgraded. But I think this is a great start to have this project. So I was quite excited to see someone come in with, you know, following all the proposals that we had put into the code. And so I look forward to seeing this come to completion. And in fact, actually, I'm assuming this will be done this year. Maybe we can get a tour of those homes and have pointed out to us all the things that they're doing, and what that's done, so. Any, any final comments or questions? Hearing none, then we'll go to the next public hearing for next week, application GPZ-3 2021 from Arcadia SP Incorporated. And again, we have considered in conjunction with that ordinance 21-21, 21-22, and resolution 21-59, same type of thing, except this one has a different proposal. And I believe Mr. Pastrick is going to lead us through this one as well. Give us the details. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So this is another general plan zone change request. The, the property here is at 6087 West Parkway Boulevard. Two parcels totaling 13.8 acres. The general plan designation currently is rural residential, which is one to two units per acre, and the requested general plan designation is medium-density residential. The current zoning is agricultural, and the requested zone is the RM zone. You can see here on the, this image, the, the property is, you have the single-family homes on the south. The property to the east is actually owned by UDOT, and will be used for stormwater detention. And it's my understanding from Public Works that the city will eventually own that property to the east, and will eventually have the, a park function on that site to the east. And you have homes to the west also. And then the property to the north is owned by Magna, the Magna Water District, where they have some wells on the property to the north, on the north side of Parkway. This next image, just a closer up of this, of the property. There are a couple of barns on the, the north end of the property. And here again, we have just a number of photos of, of the property, just to, to get a lay of the land. So this is from Parkway looking south. Another image, looking a little more to the southwest. Again, looking south. This image here is looking west along Parkway. This one is now looking south down the private lane. So if you recall from the, the aerial image, along the west side of the property, there's a private driveway that serves the homes that are on the west side of this property. So this is looking down that private lane. You can see the, the barns that would be removed here. And this is looking to the southeast along Parkway. Again, another shot of one of the barns there. This is now a little further south on that same private drive, so you can see a couple of the homes that are there on that driveway. This image is, again, from the private driveway looking to the southeast across the property. And then, this is actually just a little east of the property on the south end. So there's a stubb street that, again, doesn't exactly align with this property, but comes up against the UDOT property that's east of the subject property. So in talking with Public Works, the, the plan is to eventually connect this road out to Parkway Boulevard, but it would not actually be across this property, but just on the UDOT property. Again, this is then from that, looking from that stubb street to the northwest across the property. And then, again, looking west from where that stubb street is located. Now, this next map may look familiar, so the council may recall a few months ago, the ordinance was changed, so that requests for RM zoning could be considered by the, the council for properties that are on a right-of-way width of at least 80 feet, so that was one of the criteria. It also had to be for a proposal that was for age-restricted or senior housing. The density could not exceed seven units to the acre, and the property was, was vacant. And so when we, when that proposal was made by a developer, Randy Moore, that ordinance change was proposed by Randy. We put together this map that highlighted properties that would be at least eligible to apply for RM zoning under this new kind of carve-out, if you will, for the RM zone. And so this particular property is property number seven that's labeled on this map. So it was one of the properties that was, was at least identified as a, as a possible property that could go RM zoning based on the new criteria. So that's what the developer is proposing here, is a senior condo development, which, again, is very similar to other senior condo projects we've seen in the city, where you have four units in a building. Each unit would have a two-car garage. So this, this four-unit-type building is very similar to what we've seen in four other projects that are in the city of a similar type. Again, you can see the connection coming off of Parkway Boulevard, and then a kind of a loop system that would be a private street system. The next couple of images show, this is conceptually the floor plan of, of a single unit. You can see they're two-bedroom units. They do have a flex space that could serve as potentially either an office space or a third bedroom, but they're mainly designed with large kind of living areas. The garage, of course, and then they do have an optional bonus area that would be above the garage. That's, again, an option to, for potential buyers. The next few images here do show this, some renderings of the, the product. Again, the, similar to what we've seen in other areas, where you have two units on one side, and then, and then, of course, two units on the opposing side. The, the developer here is proposing 25% stone, which is slightly more than what's actually required in the ordinance. The ordinance requires 20%. And then this last image here reflects the, the side view of, of the unit. So again, just to summarize, their, the request here is requesting the RM zone for senior condos. There's a total of 84 units that are proposed here, and there is a development agreement that, that specifies the amenities that are provided, or that are proposed, as well as the, the renderings they're showing here, and, and other related standards. And that summarizes the staff report on this.
Thank you, Council. Any questions or comments? Interesting that these two came forward on these new kinds of proposals. And, and again, when Steve Lehman took me around viewing these senior developments, you know, they are pretty nice, and they are quite popular. They have waiting lists for people to get into them, so. And that's a stage in life where we want to keep those people here, especially if they've lived in West Valley all their lives, and they're ready to go into more of a controlled environment. So this is another nice one that'll be interesting to have. It seems like a good location for it. You know, there were, it's close to shopping and 5600 West, not too far away, so.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, Mayor. I, the translator, what you just said, that's what demand is high in our city, and we need more of this.
Yeah. All right. Any further comments?
Yeah, so I was gonna ask what the density is, how many units per acre?
But it's, so it's 6.1 is what they're proposing. So under the, under the ordinance, they could request up to seven, but the proposal here is 6.1.
And they meet all the new landscape ordinances?
Yeah, so I, so I did, I did discuss that with the developer, and asked that, you know, are you gonna be able to meet that standard? Are you needing to, you know, look at an exception? And they said, no, we're, we're confident we can meet that standard. So there's, there's no request for an exception there.
Okay, thank you. And then, I guess my comment to everyone is, do we want to let these big pieces go to projects like this, or stay for more what we've done at Newton Farm? Because we are running out of these lodge, large lots that could be the RE, and if we have enough of those in the city as well. I do know there's a high demand for these, but I know there's a high demand for the other as well.
That's a good question, Karen, and it makes me want to ask Steve a question. So we, we really pared down the areas where they could request an RM zone such as this. But what about where they could request an RE zone? Is it comparable? Is it the same land? Is it more or less land than where they could request an RM zone?
So there would be more. So all of those properties, and I can pull up again the map here, all of the properties that were on the, the map could also go to the RM zone. So that's still, and I'll pull that map up here. Right, so all of these could potentially go to the, the RE zone. In fact, we do have one proposal on, the property label is Property Nine, that actually just went to the planning commission, where a part of that's going to the RE zone. And that, so that'll be coming to the council here within probably a month or so.
But are there other properties that are not available for RM that would be available for RE?
Yes, and if, if it's helpful, like, that's a, another map we could put together to show where those opportunities are, but I, I don't have that today.
I think that would be helpful, because if we looked at this and said, well, all of these red parcels are going RM, then that could be a problem. But if there is plenty more that could be RE, then it's, for me, probably not a problem.
And just, just to clarify, while these properties became eligible for RM zoning, the council certainly does not have to approve RM zoning. It just, it just means that these properties were, are now eligible, whereas they were not before.
Right, but I think that bears on our decision, parcel by parcel, what we're going to do if we're, in effect, eliminating RE zoning, because we're not taking a long view, we're looking at things one at a time as they come. So the other map would be helpful for me.
Okay.
Along with that map, which I think is an awesome idea, if I could also request maybe just a copy of the slide. I know we've seen it within the last year as well, but the slide that has the proportionality of housing types that we currently have in the city, you remember, which are like the apartments, duplexes, et cetera, single-family. If you could attach that on, that would be helpful for me, too.
Okay. Yeah, I'm happy to do that. Yeah, I'm happy to do that.
Okay. Hearing no further discussion. All right. Then we'll move on to some other resolutions, not public hearings, resolution 21-60. An interlocal cooperative agreement with our city and Salt Lake County on the purchase of aerial photography. And so Jenny. It's Akila, Erica?
Jenny Ercola.
Ercola. Okay. That's got an interesting history, I'll bet, in the genealogy.
Absolutely. My name is Jenny Ercola and I am the IT deputy division head. And I am presenting the interlocal cooperation agreement between Salt Lake City or Salt Lake County and West Valley City to obtain high resolution orthogonal aerial photography and oblique imagery. These photos were flown just this last fall. And this is actually, we've been doing this a number of times with Salt Lake County. Last year, the county processing for the aerial photography was delayed. And so this year they're actually offering us the aerial photography and oblique imagery for no cost. So we'll be able to obtain hard copy imagery that we're able to use in a number of our different software systems. And then also we received five licenses to, for the city to use. It's called Connect. And it's software to view the oblique imagery as well. We use aerial photography throughout the city, you know, in planning and zoning. We use it in Public Works quite a bit. We use it to look at development growth throughout the city, comparing years past and we use it to, you know, do different kinds of measurements and whatnot and as backgrounds for maps as well. And so I don't think there's much change from what we're getting from last year, but, and I do think that it's definitely something that we utilize quite regularly. And I think that's all I have.
Okay, counsel, any questions? Hearing none. Then Jenny, thank you very much. We'll go to our next resolution, 21-61. Approve the purchase of a Ford F-350 truck from Kengar Ford for Parks and Recreation. And Eric Madison is going to bring us up to speed on this.
Yes, sir. All right. What we're bringing forth to you tonight is a F-350 that we were able to purchase with the sales from TNT auction of, of our surplus vehicles. So we were able to cover the purchase of that truck. We are going to need a little bit more money to get the bed and the trailer that Parks is asking for. The need arose for this because they got some additional park space from the county. And so they're going to need another truck to haul mowers and supplies out to the parks. So that would just be the, the cabin chassis. So the truck and the frame, and then the bed will come after.
Okay. Questions, comments? Well, looks like that's a pretty easy one.
All righty. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Let's see. Next we have resolution 21-62. Perpetual, excuse me, easement purchase agreement, perpetual easement and temporary construction easement. This on property at 2917 West 3871 South. This is one of those from that asphalt overlay project to meet the ADA requirements at the corners. Do you want any more presentation on that? We've done a number of these before. Hearing. No questions, then. We'll go to our communications and we have a review of our critical care paramedic program. Scott Hall.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, counsel. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Scott Hall and battalion chief currently assigned over the medical division with our fire department. Chief Evans asked me to put together a presentation for you on our critical care program. So we will go through that here. So just real briefly, a little bit of history about the program itself. We started our program in late 2016. Initially, we promoted nine of our paramedics to the rank of critical care paramedic. This was a new rank that was developed. We required a lot of more extensive training of these paramedics, which I'll go into here in just a second. This was a new service obviously offered to, through the West Valley City Fire Department to the citizens of West Valley. And one of the main things that we were going to do with this service was help when hospitals called for, called through the 911 system for critical patients where they needed to be taken to another hospital, we would be able to respond in a quick time and provide a high level of care. So we partnered with Jordan Valley West Hospital. Not only to help with patient care, but also for some of our extensive and ongoing training. This was an unprecedented level of service. We were the very first agency in Utah to provide a critical care service. To my knowledge, we still are the only agency. I do know other agencies are looking at it, but nobody has taken it on quite yet. So our critical care better paramedics, like I said, are required to have more training than our normal paramedics. They have to get advanced training in the care and transport of critical medical and trauma patients. All of them need to obtain a critical care paramedic certification through the international board of spec, specialty certifications. So this board is actually an internationally recognized certification board. They're known throughout the world. Very, it's, it's a, it's an honor that we have so many of our members that are certified through this board. Along with that, they also have to obtain a certification that they've completed a difficult airway course. This course goes pretty in depth on how we can help manage difficult airways, airways that are crashing and control those airways to hopefully for better patient outcomes. I mentioned our partnership with Jordan Valley West Hospital is one of the main things that we do is we do require our critical care paramedics. They will go to the OR over at Jordan Valley West or at Jordan Valley Maine, a minimum of once a year. And they spend about four to eight hours depending on the caseload for that day. And they work with the anesthesiologist and the, and the surgeons there practicing innovation and just learning more about critical patients. It's been a really positive thing for our critical care paramedics and a really positive thing on the hospital side. As a matter of fact, we had to kind of put a pause on it during the COVID stuff and the hospitals for the last few months have been calling saying to me, when are they coming back? When are they coming back? They've really enjoyed them. We've actually started that backup. So we can get our people back in there. So what's different about our critical cares than our normal paramedics? Well, a lot of it comes down to the equipment they carry and they're trained on. For example, IV infusion pumps. So currently we have two different brands of IV infusion pumps. This is a picture of each of them. They have to be trained on how to program these, how to set up the infusion lines, how to make sure that the right medication is being administered at the right rate to provide the needed care to the patient. Also probably the biggest piece of equipment that they spent a lot of time training on are, is our ventilator. So the, the large one there, the AEV ventilator, this is a ventilator that we use to mechanically ventilate patients who are innovated and who are unconscious. So they're not breathing on their own. Sometimes doctors have to innovate patients and put them to sleep so that procedures can be done or so that they can allow certain parts of the body to heal. They'll put them on these ventilators. And then we will come get these patients, put them on our ventilator, which you see there and take them to other facilities that can provide a little bit more long-term or higher, higher level of care. The other smaller ventilator that you see there, that's a pretty common or a lot of households. Actually, it's called the Philips V30 BiPAP machine. BiPAP is a really, a really big emerging way to treat respiratory problems right now. Some of you may recall that during the beginning of COVID, a lot of these, those patients were being innovated, innovated. And it was found later on that these patients should not be innovated. It was probably one of the worst things you could do for them. So they're putting them on BiPAP. We decided to buy this, this separate ventilator because we do have a lot of patients that are on BiPAP and it is a lot more comfortable for them to be on a BiPAP machine and a lot safer than during their transports than it is for them to potentially have to be innovated and use the other ventilator. The hospitals, when we purchased this, they said that no, no other agency did they know of that went out and bought their own BiPAP machine. So it was a great, great tool that we have at our disposal. So another big thing about our critical care paramedics is a procedure called RSI that stands for rapid sequence innovation. This basically is a procedure that we can utilize medications to put a patient to sleep, to paralyze them, to take their respiratory drive away. And then we innovate them and put them on our ventilator. Again, some scenarios where we don't want the patient breathing on their own, or if they are breathing on their own, we're worried about their airway crashing. I don't know if the council would remember, but a few years ago, we actually had the young 14 year old boy that got hit in front of Kennedy Junior High by a car. He had significant head trauma and we did use this procedure on him. We wanted to control his breathing due to his head trauma. It's pretty awesome. I was on that call and he comes and visits us at the station on a lot. He comes around a ton. It's a great to see him and to know that he's alive and doing well. So like I said in there, we can use this tool to manage, help manage mechanically ventilate patients. We are the only agency in the valley that has the ability to do this procedure and only one of five in the state that can do this procedure. Of those five, two are flight teams. The other being late in fire in the Davis County Sheriff's Office. So not very many of us out there that have the training or the ability to do this. And we're proud to be able to offer that to the citizens of West Valley. So where are we currently? Currently we have 12 members. We just promoted two more critical care paramedics on Saturday. We have an additional seven members who have all the same qualifications. They just happen to be different ranks. We have, we work with Jordan Valley West and only train with their doctors and nurses. But they will also call us through the 911 system if they have critical patients they need moved anywhere in their hospital, in their emergency room, in their med surge, in the ICU. With the opening of the St. Mark's West Valley, same thing, they will call us if they have a critical patient that they want to go to their main campus, that they that needs the, a higher level of care than what can be offered other places. And the last one there, 911 response. So going, going back to the 12 members that are currently the rank in the seven that have the qualifications. We run two people, two of our critical cares on an ambulance per shift. So every, every day there's at least two. So you might be thinking, well, you have so many and so how is this a benefit to the, the normal citizens? Well, as long as our members meet the qualifications of the training standards, they can perform the same procedures and use the same equipment when they're out responding on 911 calls when they're at a different station. So I think currently right now of the six stations that we have in the city, five of them I have on a really pretty regular basis. I have somebody responding from that station that has these qualifications. And then what about the future? So our goal is to get to 15 critical care paramedics. We want to expand our 911 response. And one way we do that is by getting to that 15 because then we're just increasing the chances that we'll have a critical care paramedic on every call that we respond on. And along with that, we'll have the advanced medications and equipment. We want to expand our training with hospitals and possibly we're looking right now at implementing field ultrasound. So there's a lot of different ways that we could implement ultrasound. And I know that might sound expensive, but it's actually not. That's one of the, the neat things about advances in technology is the ultrasound is actually really reasonably a reasonable financial thing that we could do. One way we're looking to use ultrasound right now is not to look to see if someone's pregnant, but when we go on cardiac arrest calls, we typically, we're always looking to find a pulse in the patient to see if they're a viable patient. EMS in general, it's really hard to find pulses. We're, we're about 50% where across the nation, we, we miss them. We can use that ultrasound machine to actually physically look at the heart and see if there's any movement of the heart at all. And if we see any movement of the heart, then we know that that patient is viable. And we will continue to work them and get them to definitive care. So that's something we're excited about, excited to hopefully implement that. And then also we want to continue to be leaders of EMS in the county and in the state. We, we are proud that we have the most progressive and advanced providers in this state, and we want to continue that. Like I said, there are other agencies looking at similar programs and we just, we want to stay a step ahead of them. So. So what does this mean for the typical West Valley citizen? It is, it comes down to that they are receiving the highest level of care you possibly could in this state. It gets, this program gets compared to like having a flight team with you on every single call. These are the same certifications that are flight, that flight paramedics have to get and the same training that they're going through. And it's something we're really proud of and I, I really hope it continues to grow. So, does anybody have any questions for me? All right. Thank you.
Well, I just would mention, so the critical care. We, we're basically the only one in the state. The RSI, then there are four others that do it to some degree.
Correct.
Well, that's certainly very impressed I am with it. We're moving in that direction and having that level of care and concern for those who are in our city.
Absolutely.
So well done. Well done.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Next communication is Harmon Theater update and Nancy Day, I believe, is joining us. And there I see electronic sign. There we go.
Hi. Welcome. Thank you very much. Good evening, mayor and council members. Nancy Day, Parks and Recreation Director, and I'm thrilled to be able to take the opportunity to talk a little bit about the theater. I'm going to share my screen here. Hopefully you can see that. All right. Let me get that. So, all right. So I'm just really excited to be able to do this. And as you know, just a few short months ago, the Utah Cultural Celebration Center, as well as the Performing Arts Center came to Parks and Recreation and we feel like it's a great fit. We're thrilled to be able to work with the staff there. They're very professional and passionate about what they do. And you know, we're just really excited about that. So let me jump right in. And the first thing I'd like to do is talk a little bit to you about the upcoming productions. The first one that we've got that actually starts this Friday is Eight Misbehavin'. And that's the music of Fats Waller, as you can see, which it's really, if you're not familiar, it's a tribute to Thomas Fats Waller. And it's going to be a lot of fun and really upbeat. And I think it's something that you'll really enjoy. And it's going to be a lot of fun, um, and really upbeat. And I think it's something that you'll really enjoy. It is directed by Oyo Yobonner. And, uh, the cool thing about, about her is that she is a Broadway actress that because of COVID, she's home now, you know, she's here. And so we've been able to take the opportunity to have her be a part of this. And we're really thrilled about that. The next one, which will start July eighth is Footloose. And that is, there's a little change on here from what was sent to you last week. It is now directed and choreographed by Jenny Barlow. There was some last minute changes. And so that's why it looks a little different there. Um, and Jenny Barlow, she is truly one of the best in the state. She actually usually does all of the big dance productions for Health Center Theater. So we have her on board to help us with Footloose this year. The next one is Sweeney Todd, and this actually starts September ninth. Um, and, uh, this director here has actually directed more productions in our facility than any other director and has directed A Christmas Carol for Health Center Theater for, this will be their eighteenth year, uh, doing that. So again, some really good directors that we've got for these productions. And then the last is just a little bit of a taste of some of the plays, some of the productions that the staff are applying for, for the next seasons. You can get a little taste there. Little Women, Beauty and the Beast, um, In the Heights. And, and it's, these aren't guaranteed. And of course, there's others that they're looking at. But, uh, the In the Heights, if you're not familiar with that, towards the end of this year, um, they're making that into a film. It's a Broadway play that has been nominated for many, many awards and received some, you know, quite a few of those as well. Um, and it's, uh, about a Dominican neighborhood that's in the Washington Heights area of New York City. So again, I think that will be, uh, a lot of fun. And we're also hoping to have an American premiere of a new musical later on, um, in the next season as well. So some of the strengths I want to highlight, um, on the theater. First of all, the theater community and our community as a whole really loves this performing space. They love this facility. They love coming there. Um, and that's a real positive for us. As you may recall, when I reviewed the needs assessment that was done by our department last year and the survey results that we received, we had a number of people comment that they wanted to see more community theater opportunities and classes. And we're going to be able to do that, um, with our staff there. So that really ties in with some of the things our community wants to see. The ticket pricing has been structured really well as we've been able to step into this, you know, new year here with the theater. The staff were able to get what's called the shop in Utah grad. That's what helped us be able to keep those prices low. And this will really bring the community out in attendance more and more, especially as we're able to break away from some of the more stricter COVID protocols that are there. Another really significant strength is that the public, as well as high quality actors and actresses, which of course, who we want for, um, our productions, there's a real draw because of those really great directors that I just spoke to you about. So, uh, we're excited about that. You know, these actors and actresses that are so good, want to work with the best. And of course, that brings the community and the public to those productions as well. We have the new audio and lighting equipment, which is amazing. Um, and I wanted to really point out that, that you've got some really dedicated and committed staff members and performers for the theater. They love that theater is coming back to West Valley. And, um, it's really a community theater. It's something that we're bringing great productions, but, uh, we're doing it in such a way that we're reaching out to our community in a good way. And so, uh, it's just been really fun to work with them. And then we also have a very strong and significant partnership, uh, with the Utah Shakespeare Festival. As a matter of fact, in November, we're supposed to have a world premiere from them at our facility, which is huge. And, uh, Andrew Valentine has been, uh, very involved with the Utah Shakespeare, uh, team. And so I asked him to take a few minutes to talk to you just a little bit more about that partnership. So Andrew, if, if you want to, um, say a few words there, that'd be great.
Uh, thank you, Nancy, and, uh, thank you, council. Yeah, so I've been the primary, uh, contact with Utah Shakespeare Festival, uh, for a while now. And, uh, we have a wonderful relationship, uh, that continues to, to build with them. We're very excited, as Nancy mentions, that, uh, we'll be able to participate in a world premiere of, um, of a play with them. The play is called Gold Mountain and, uh, there was a stage reading of it for the Spike one fifty. And with some of the relationships that, uh, Utah Shakespeare Festival has, they were able to secure the rights to do the world premiere and, and felt like our facility would be the perfect location to do that. And so we're working hand in hand with that, or with them on that project. Myself and several of the staff members here, uh, will be working as kind of the onsite, uh, individuals production team, uh, working with their production team in Cedar City. Um, and so it's going to be a very, very close knit, uh, relationship going into this project, even more so than, than we've had in the past. So we're very excited to, to continue to forward that relationship and have such a wonderful, large scale project, uh, to further solidify and move us, uh, further into the future.
Great. Thank you, Andrew. I, I appreciate that. And, um, and our city manager, Mr. Pyle, has also been involved with, uh, with Shakespeare. And, and I know his leadership and Andrew's have been really key in us being able to, to, uh, get some of these and get that involvement. So thank you, Andrew. Appreciate that. So we also have some challenges, um, like any facility. Some are the capital repairs that are needed. Uh, the stage is, is pretty worn out and in need of a complete rebuild, honestly. So there's some major work there. There's also some other areas. If you've been to the theater recently, you'll see some of these areas, um, that need a little bit of work. Some may be cosmetic. Some are, are definitely more operational. Um, so that's a challenge for us. Another challenge is that it's, uh, still, the, the theater itself is still associated with the Hill family. So to offset this, what we're really trying to do is increase more public education, more communication to let people know this is the West Valley Performing Arts Center, um, and that tie in there and the tie into our community. Kind of going hand in hand in that is the next one, which is, we are a new theater company. We're not well known. So we need to increase our marketing efforts and, and our appearance on social media and other sites to, again, uh, let people know who we are. There are some staffing needs. We're starting up, right? And so as we start up, as we grow, there's going to be even, um, more reason for us to bring in staff that will really help make this the best location that we possibly can for these productions. Um, and then sometimes seeking out new funding sources can be a challenge. And that kind of goes a little bit with the staffing needs as well, because we have, uh, some staff that their, their main purpose is to grant, write for grants or seek funding sources. But we also need their help on the backend and, and running the facility, um, for the productions and whatnot. So we're trying to, to really make some concerted efforts to be able to offset that, um, a little bit. And then the last slide I have are some of the new opportunities, um, that we have because we are a new theater group, um, with this theater. And the first one is the theater community really wants some new creative options, right? They, they want it kind of a new experience. They don't want it to be corporate or maybe, I hate to say cookie cutter, but you know, they want to see some different things. The staff's working really hard to listen to the theater community, to listen to our community and make sure that we bring in the best productions that will really satisfy, uh, all of those coming to, to see these productions. And, um, really have some fun with that. The naming rights campaign, you're familiar with. Uh, they've been working with pathways for a while now. And there's been a great response, uh, for opportunities there. And those fundings will just go far to help us get to, to where that facility needs to be. Andrew spoke about, uh, the Utah Shakespeare Festival. They're very invested. They're very excited about working with this. And, uh, the potential for public money, we're talking federal, state, uh, Salt Lake County funds. We really fall in line with what some of the Salt Lake County goals are in relationship to theater and the arts. And so I think that is helpful for us. Also, something that's fun that I was just made aware of, which I think is, is pretty cool, is the staff, they were awarded the Create in Utah grant last year. They asked for a hundred and eighty-five thousand and actually got a hundred and ninety thousand. And then a few days later, the staff were contacted and said, hey, can you spend more money? Can you use it? And the staff, being as smart as they are, said yes. And so they got another ninety thousand. So they actually got almost a hundred thousand more than what they applied for. So that's, that's fantastic. And that just shows you the eagerness they have to bring in those funds, to help offset costs and to really take things to that next level. And then, uh, we've talked about, uh, potential for shows to premiere at the American level, at the world premiere level. That's exciting news for West Valley City and for our theater. And, uh, and then the last thing is, uh, the staff is also looking at new revenue producing opportunities. So as the theater grows, as we get more props and set pieces and costumes, we'll be able to rent those out to other theaters and in other avenues, uh, to help offset again the cost of those. And then as there's gaps in between, in between, excuse me, productions, the staff are able to help with having theater classes. Again, that's that community option that our community really wants to see. And it's really, right now, it's in high demand. There just aren't mermaid places that are doing that. So I think we're going to see a lot of success with that. And then also some sewing and costume classes, uh, design, uh, was brought up that they could do some wedding dress design, you know, for, as well. So, uh, really have some fun opportunities there. So that, sorry, let me, that is my final slide. So are there any questions or anything I can help you with, with that?
Nancy, yes, a couple of clarifications. Currently, it looks like then we have two methods, if you will. The city provides the venue, but in the case of many of these, the city is also providing the programming. Shakespeare is different in that we provide the venue, but they provide the programming. Is that a correct way to state that?
Yes, yes, I believe so. And, and I don't have all the details on that, but they're working with our staff and they're working with us. But yes, they, they take great pride and ownership on the productions that they, that they put out there. And, and that makes sense. Um, I will say this as well. Andrew has been contacted by other directors that have wanted to, you know, th- they're not, they're not quite to the level of some of these productions or plays, but they've, they've written something that they would like to rent the theater and then have their production there for one or two weeks. And so those are things that we look at to fill in the gaps again, as long as it isn't something that will hurt us in the long run. So we're, we're kind of particular, but that is another option as well, which kind of falls in line a little bit with what you're saying, Mayor.
And if you could identify for us, just based currently where we are, the number of productions or nights, whatever, how you term it, for each of those two different groups, Shakespeare and then the ones that we're doing. Just to get an idea of how busy is the theater? And then you're going to fill that obviously with other things, but at least to get an idea of that. And then one question that someone called and asked me about was, uh, family, family related productions, that is, you know, a production that you can take family to, meaning younger age members. And, uh, well, I'll just leave it at that and say, are we still focused on that? Because that was kind of the niche that West Valley created here before, was to make it available to families. And I just want to make sure that that's still a very high priority for the productions that we show here.
Yeah. So let me answer that question first, Mayor. Um, that is very important. So as, um, Andrew and I spoke and spoke with some of the other staff there, that's as they're selecting their productions, uh, for the future. One of the things we talked about was family friendly, making sure that it's something that, uh, the community feels comfortable coming to see. Um, and, uh, you know, uh, age might vary a little bit, right? You might not always bring, it, it could be a, a quality performance that's positive, but maybe I still wouldn't take my five-year-old to, you know, but it still would be a family friendly there. They wouldn't all be Disney type productions, you know what I mean? So, um, it, so it might not, it might still be an appropriate play, but a five-year-old might not enjoy it. I guess it's kind of how I'm saying that. Uh, but as we look at the productions, that is definitely something, um, that we want to see and still maintain within our community. Um, and if there's questions, Andrew and his staff have been really good to talk to me about it, so that we can address what may be a concern, um, for, for each of you as elected officials representing, you know, your constituents in our city, um, as well as those in our community. So we do take that very serious. But we also want to see a variety of productions. Does that, does that answer that question, Mayor?
Yes, but we're, and that's why I brought up the programming part. If the programming is being done by Shakespeare, or as you indicated, someone wants to rent the theater for a couple of weeks to do a production. Well, that's good, but you don't have any control over whether it's family friendly in that case, do you?
That, that's correct, Mayor, except that what we do is we make sure that we will read through the script, that we will see exactly what it is before we will allow for it to be in our community. I think that's very important, that as the owners and operators and management team of that facility, that we, that we do that. So.
Okay, thank you. Now I've taken care of one of my other phone calls I've gotten, so.
Okay.
I think too, Mayor, uh, in cooperating with Shakespeare, they have a long history of being family friendly. And, um, most of us have some history with those plays too. So we know what the play is and we know what audience it appeals to. Some of these other plays, uh, I have to talk to my son who graduated in theater and ask him what it is and if I should go to it. And I know I'm, I've been to a, a couple of these, uh, this year and they've been great productions. This last one was a little, uh, more worldly, let's say. And I think I was warned four times as I bought the tickets and four times as I walked into the theater, that it might be a little more rugged to listen to than I'm used to.
Or risque, I guess.
Well, it wasn't risque as much as it was just, you know, uh, The Odd Couple is a, uh, a little bit more, uh, worldly type thing. And they, uh, the, the staff was very cognizant of that and warned us. And they said they'd taken everything out they could, but the director, again, when you rent a script, you can't completely revise it. But they're, they're doing a great job.
Yeah, I think it's important that as this goes along, that clearly in the advertising and the publicity, that it's clear if it's a West Valley production versus someone who has rented the facility and is doing their own play. So I think that's important, just because they are doing it there. We don't put West Valley City's name on it. So that's some control we could exercise.
That is correct. And, and, uh, Councilman Christensen, we, we did talk at length about that production as well and what we want or don't want to see in the future. And so we take that, um, into consideration as well. So it's, uh, you know, the staff has been really great to talk to about that. So I think that will be very helpful. And, and Mayor, you did ask also about, um, how many nights of performances for our productions versus like, uh, the Shakespeare performance. Is that correct? Was that the first question?
Yes. And if you don't have that, just email me.
Okay. I, I don't have that right now, but I will, unless Andrew, do you have, do you happen to know that?
I, I actually can't answer that, uh, if you'd like. So the, the general formats, uh, as of right now is So, the, the general format as of right now is that West Valley Arts, or West Valley City, if you will, will have five productions throughout the year. Right now, we are running performances on Thursday night, Friday night, a Saturday matinee, Saturday night, and then a Monday night for a typical show. Ain't Misbehavin' is a little bit different because of scheduling conflicts with the cast. And so, we're not running Monday nights, but a typical show will have 19 performances. So, over the course of the year, we'll have about 95 performances that our patrons would be able to attend. And those are strictly ones that we produce ourselves. Now, in a typical year, what we're planning on is that Shakespeare will end the year with a holiday production of some kind. And that would be roughly 30 to 45 performances, depending on how they structure and what play they do. This year, because it's a world premiere that they are planning to do, they are going to do a shorter run. It is not a holiday production. And so, they wanted to get it in and done, taking care of it before the holidays start. So, they're planning on a two-week run. And I believe that would have a matinee on Saturdays. So, roughly 16 productions for the general public. And then typically what they'll do is they'll have some educational performances during the week, during the day that different schools will be invited to. So, I don't think they have a set schedule yet, but, but that kind of gives a snapshot of what we're expecting this year and in future years.
Thank you, Andrew. I appreciate that. And just as a side note too, we have had to limit the number of seats that are available due to COVID protocol. So, we're just starting to be able to increase that a little bit more and you'll see that grow through the summer and fall, right? So, we're excited to see that.
Councilman Christiansen?
Nancy, I had one more question. You said we need to do some work on the stage and I totally agree. In the presentations I've been to, I've noticed we haven't used the mechanized part of the stage. Is that part of what we have to get repaired and worked on?
Yes, yes, I believe so. There's, overall, it's pretty close to 1.5 million dollars to do this. And again, that's where the, the naming rights and the other fundraising opportunities come into play to help us with that. So, that is correct.
Thank you.
I have a question for Nancy.
Yes.
So, it looks like from what Andrew just said, that we're at maybe 120 nights production. Are we renting out the facility for any other corporate events, like dinners or wedding receptions? I know I've been to a couple wedding receptions in the past there. Are we thinking outside the box to those things or are we just staying with productions?
For right now, since we're so new coming back, we're sticking with the productions. But we have had those conversations to be able to rent out, like you said, to corporate weddings, reunions, that type of thing. So, yes, we absolutely are looking at doing that, but we're just not right now. Another difficult side to that, which is what we've experienced at the golf courses, is with the COVID protocols, it's very difficult to, to offer those at this time. So, we're kind of waiting till we can get out of that trend as well and, and be able to offer the full package.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Hearing no further questions. Nancy and Andrew, thank you very much. Appreciate that update. That's been very helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any issues on council calendar? Hearing none. Potential future agenda items? Hearing none. Then council reports. I do have one. I attended the grand opening for Spring Hill Suites across the street here at the mall. Although they've been open for business for a while and a very nice facility. The thing I would mention on that is that they've indicated that although they opened up during COVID-19, the pandemic, they've actually exceeded their expectations. So, they were fairly happy that they were doing better than they anticipated and had very positive things to say about being here in West Valley. So, nice event.
That's good to hear, since they're one of my preferred ones. And the other place I go in Anaheim, so.
Okay. Any other council reports that you've thought of? If not, we do have a need for a closed session for the purpose of discussing pending litigation, to discuss professional competency and security, those three items. So, maybe if we could get a motion then that we will close our meeting for the purpose of discussing those three items. And then we will adjourn without any further business immediately following that.
So moved. Second.
Okay, properly before us then, without objection, we will close our meeting and discuss those three items and then adjourn. Hearing no objections, that motion passes. We'll excuse those who are not part of that closed meeting. And I guess electronically, that means some will be, they just don't invite them in.
Do we have a new link that we go to?
Yes, we are in a new link. So, each council member, person participating, will need to leave the meeting and re-sign in.
Thank you.